Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on January 13th. Recognizing that all members of the City Council are present, I'd like to invite the public to join the City Council in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to public comment, first start off with the School Board Liaison, Steve Scheiman.
We did have a meeting last Wednesday, and a large part of that meeting had to do with discussion workshop on communications. There's, I think there's unanimity on the board that we need to do a lot on this, and in a practical sense, probably hire somebody, the circumstance of which I'm not, we don't, haven't arrived at yet, to work partly in coordination with what the city is doing on the city side, so that we have good communications, but also to have our own person. And the idea is to give people at best a view of things that is straightforward in terms of what is going on between us, the council, the public, and this is really critical because we cannot operate in a vacuum by ourselves, and we have to work in connection with what the council's doing, and certainly the community. So this is a very important effort that's being made at every level, not just at the school board level, but at the superintendent's level and leadership level, that even in the content of our meetings, to try to make the meetings more friendly toward the public. Now, on Wednesday of this week, we have another, we have another meeting, and part of that meeting I'd like to invite council members to attend, or anybody else from the public, and that is that there's going to be a report on the PATHS program, P-A-T-H-S, which has to do with Medicaid reimbursement from the state. That program is complex, and this is more of a programmatic report that deals with why we have the program, and what the program has been able to accomplish, and I myself am eager to learn from the person reporting this under staff reports in the meeting. So I invite you to attend that, and that's all that I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is David Plaven and Kevin Roach. Gentlemen, just for the record, please state your name and address into the microphone and speak clearly, please.
Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road, David Plaven, 2 Surf Street. We're here as leadership of Save Our Shores SOS Saco Bay. First off, a welcome to Brian from both of us, welcome to Saco, and a public congratulations, I think we've talked to all of you, but for you personally, for the new mayor, and the rest of council. Just a quick recap of SOS Saco Bay, we are a nonprofit advocacy group to promote action by the Army Corps of Engineers to stop Saco Bay beach erosion and problems caused by the man-made jetty. This is not a climate change liberal, conservative, Democrat, Republican, beachfront, downtown, rural, Saco-only issue. This is a Saco Bay issue whose fault lies with the Army Corps. Based on the positive attention you all gave this issue during the election season, we have no doubt you will have action on this issue as a top priority in your upcoming goal What action that's going to happen out of this is to be determined. We first have to know that we have united Saco City and communicate to all residents the current situation is unsustainable, with the loss of public beach, property, property value, and tax dollars lost, annually paying $250,000 down at the beach with Public Works for the status quo that could be spent elsewhere for city needs. You, Mayor, Bill, have met with us and supports our advocacy, and we support the mayor's new approaches to the issue, including a more aggressive approach to dredging, getting the Army Corps plan back in the pipeline in some form, and the economic reinvigoration of Camp Ellis and the beach area. We support the ongoing research and dialogue with the city's Shoreline Commission. I am the new secretary of this commission, and David has applied to you to, for one of the three openings, and you have committed to weekly meetings with Rick Millard, the chair. So if there's people out there who want to join the commission, there's three, there's three spots, so. On the citizen front, we will find out soon where beachfront owners stand on legal action on the jetty, but I can tell you there is progress. In the end, 2020, this year, is the year of action. After 25 years, we finally got the Saco River dredged, and we saw how much activity sand on our beach down there this summer increased during the summer months. Scarborough has just spent $5 million to dredge our sand out of their harbor. The Ferry Beach State Park, state-owned park, saw more erosion than the rest of the beach, with the state seeing less and less visitor activity there. So whether it's the state signing on to a PPA, a partnership agreement, the Army Corps unshelving the current plans, and Congress, particularly a certain senator, up for reelection, securing the additional funding necessary for a true solution, we need 2020 to end with a plan moving forward. We are all out of excuses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your recent appointment as secretary of this. Are there any other public comment? Moving on to, oh, sorry. If, if, come on down.
Excuse me, Mayor and council, my name is Beth Johnston, I live at 62 Pleasant Street. I have been a school board member from Ward Seven for several years. As you all probably know here in this room, perhaps not the people who are listening on, you know, whatever screen, streaming, whatever that's called now, at the board meeting, the school board meeting on December 18th, our board chair, Garrett Abrahamsen, gave us his verbal resignation from the board, effective immediately. As surprised as I was, I knew that we had a policy to fill a board vacancy, so I, like probably many others, went into the holiday expecting that an election would be scheduled as soon as possible to fill Garrett's Ward One board seat. On our first board, our first board meeting after the break, the holiday break, occurred on January 8th, which is just less than a week ago, and on that board agenda, there was no item dealing with filling the vacancy for Ward One. However, at that meeting, in a side conversation, I learned that it was going to be too expensive to hold a separate election to fill the board vacancy in Ward One, and that we would need to wait until a general election in June. Now, particularly now, after I've reviewed it again, I realize that our board policy is more vague than that of the city charter. However, this policy intends to follow the spirit of the city charter and to fill a vacancy in elected a government as quickly as possible. During that six or so months that might occur between Garrett's resignation and the June election of a new board member, the voters of Ward One have no representation on the school board, and they are disenfranchised. How can this be the right thing to do? How can this be the right way to handle this? We are a representative form of government. Now, I do realize that in the last week, a request has been submitted for a legal opinion around this, let's say, supposed ambiguity, but should not that have happened before the determination was made that we were going to wait until June? So I wait with bated breath to hear what that legal opinion might be, but I really ask all of you to think about what kind of government are we running? And I personally, as one board member, just one board member, really hope that we can work this out in a way that will not disenfranchise Ward One voters. I certainly hope that many of them might come here also to express their concern about not having a representative on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Moving on to item number five, action items. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The city acting through the Department of Planning and Development seeks a qualified developer to purchase and improve the property, 351 North Street. Proposals will be evaluated on several factors, including but not limited to the ability to maximize the economic development potential of the site, negotiated sales price, additional evaluation criteria as described on page five of the RFP. To be considered, developers must submit a development proposal in response to a request for proposal, RFP, in a manner prescribed in the RFP. The property is situated on approximately 24 acres and currently consists of a 7,404-square-foot industrial building built in 1991, and a 15,646-square-foot garage built in 1973. The building is connected to public water and public sewer, it has three-phase power and a natural gas hookup. The parcel abuts the main turnpike for approximately 1,500 feet. The only entrance is from North Street Route 112 at the southern end of the property. The RFP outlines the proposal requirements on page four and five, evaluation criteria on page five, and the proposed RFP schedule on page seven of the RFP listed below. Selection of the developer is subject to the following review process in the City Code, Chapter 81, Sale of City Property, 81-2 Procedure, and pending final City Council vote to authorize the sale and lease of the premises for city staff to negotiate an agreement with the selected respondent. The RFP is available tomorrow on January 14th, 2020. Site visits will be conducted January 21st through 24th, 2020. Questions submitted by Friday, January 31st, 2020. City response to questions, Friday, February 7th, 2020. Proposals due Wednesday, February 19th, 2020. Interviews, February 26th through 28th, 2020. Developer to begin city-approved process by March 13th, 2020, and anticipated purchase and sale negotiated by April 15th, 2020. A legal interpretation of the City Code, Section 81-2 on procedure, was obtained to determine that the sale of city-owned property review process could run concurrently or simultaneously with the RFP process. It was determined by attorney Tim Murphy that both processes could run simultaneously. Refer to Attachment Three for the legal opinion. The city planner will begin the planning board review process at the next planning board meeting scheduled for January 14th, 2020. The attached exhibits include the Public Works RFP and the section of the City Code pertaining to the sale of public property, Section 81-2 Procedure. I move that the City Council authorize the city administrator to publicize the RFP for 351 North Street Public Works Facility, effective January 14th, 2020, and permit the city to run the RFP process concurrently with the sale of the city-owned property review process, as in the City Code, Chapter 81, Sale of City Property, 81-2 Procedure.
Has been a motion made by Councilor Minthorne, is her second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Well, first, I'd like to thank the staff for reconsidering, pushing this forward without coming to council first. Again, I wanted to ensure that council was setting this process through the RFP. I do have two questions, the first being why we have no minimum set for a project of 10 mil or more? My understanding was that we were trying to recoup the 2 million or so needed for the Public Works Facility, and it was, previously, we had an unsolicited bid back in 2014 or 15 for 2 million. So, there's that question, if Ms. Clovett would like to come up?
Yeah, but you'll be sleeping. Come in.
Good evening, thank you.
May I? The rationale between no minimum bid for that piece of redevelopment versus redevelopment of the existing site as-is, is that the property value, we were asking for a two-minutely minimum bid, if you're just going to refurbish the building, because you're probably going to wind up with maybe a 3 or 4 million dollar building, tops. So the minimum bid means that, doesn't mean that we want nothing for the land, it just basically means that there's no minimum, and, so it won't discourage somebody from maybe offering potentially a million dollars, but turning it into a 15 to 20 to 25,000, 25 million dollar project. And RFPs that we researched throughout the country were done in various ways, and the majority of them did have a minimum bid for just pure redevelopment, and the other ones basically to redevelop the entire site into something totally different.
I can definitely understand the rest now. The only concern I would have is you have a developer come in, say they're going to do a 15 million dollar project, you, the city sells it for a million or 500,000, because we think that's a worthwhile project, and then the project doesn't come forth, and then we don't have the money to cover the anticipated revenue for that DPW site.
Agreed. I would anticipate in the purchase and sale that we would make sure that that is covered.
Right, and then...
And I think, if you read the RFP, I think they have like X amount of time to redevelop the property.
Under the evaluation process, or evaluation criteria, it says, "From the completed proposals received before the deadline, finalists may be selected to present their respective proposals to the selection committee for review." And so my question is, will council be given all applications, whoever proposes through this RFP, or does council need to be under the understanding that we're kind of seceding part of the process here?
Tim, I might need your help with this one. We talked about the legality, and a lot of these projects should be protected under FOA as confidential economic development proposals, and so the steering committee, which we have yet to determine who's exactly going to sit on that, are going to be the ones that are going to review all, let's say we get 10 or 20 proposals, and in a grid format, and narrow it down to three to five for interviews. My assumption is that we would be going to city council in executive session with a three to five. I don't think that exposing 10 to 15 different business opportunities with their ideas is probably a very good economic development practice for the developers.
Okay, I don't disagree. I just wanted to make sure it's clear to council, since we've had a similar situation in the past, that we are seceding some of our oversight here, and that staff will be presenting us with three to five, or however many they see fit, proposals.
And, you know, we would welcome, staff would welcome, having one or two counselors sit in on that clearing committee, if you would like that representation as well.
And then, the last thing is just a clerical thing. Traditionally, when a project or something takes place in a counselor's ward, they're generally the council resource, in this case, DPW Garage happens to be in my ward, so going forward, I would suggest that Ward Seven counselor is the resource.
Again, we cleared that through the mayor, and, so...
Thank you. Are there any counselors that would be interested in being on this election committee? Counselor Johnston?
Please.
Counselor Purdy? With an alternate is Counselor Minthorne. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minthorne?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to agenda, item six, new business. We will now hear under item A, under audit presentation. Thank you. I'm Roger LeBrew, I'm a partner with the audit firm running Christine Willette. I'm also the partner on the city of Saco's audit. I know some of you, I see familiar faces, you recognize me from last year, and I see new faces on your side, so welcome aboard. I met with Brian briefly before this meeting, just to get to know each other real quick and go over a few things. So, to be clear for tonight, we're covering the audit results effective June 30, 2019. So, what I'm going to attempt to do, for those who are new, is take a 136-page CAFER and break it down into 18, what I think will probably be useful slides, but I'll let you decide, but certainly takes the more important, extracts the most important information out of that CAFER, and it'll be easier to understand. So again, for those that are new, we'll go over some of the highlights, mostly the general fund. You could stop me and ask questions as we go along, or you could wait till the end, it doesn't throw me off either way. So the colorful graphs are just what they are, colorful graphs, a summary. Whenever making important management decisions, you should always rely on your CAFER, which is where the audit opinion is, which are the only two or three pages in that document that's ours. The rest of this document was compiled by Glennis, your finance staff, who did an excellent job, by the way, of preparing that document, and I'm sure she doesn't even want to tell you how many hours it involved, but I know it's a lot, because I've prepared it myself in the past. So going through these highlights, like I said, the, we'll start with the financial statements. You received an unmodified opinion, so in layman's terms, that means a clean audit opinion. If there's a new Gatsby out there that applies to the city, it's incorporated in your financial statements. The city, if you're not aware, applies for a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Probably less than 15 municipalities in the state apply for that. The city's had it for the last 20 years. You did receive it in 2018. This document has been submitted again for 2019, which I'm confident will pass, and then you'll find that out in the next couple of months. In addition to the financial statements, you have internal reporting on government auditing standards, which deals with internal controls, so we don't only test your financial data, we test how the systems create that data. Three levels of comments, you know, you have a material weakness, the highest, most severe level, you had none. Significant deficiencies, one layer down from a material weakness, you did this year have two, which we'll go over that later on, and then the less severe, what we call management letter comments, in the lowest level of severity, and you had three of those that we'll also discuss. In addition to that, we also test your federal grants. You receive and spend about 2.5 million dollars of federal money between the city and the school. I think the city's about 800 or 900,000 of that, and the rest is the school. We tested special education cluster, which is your local entitlement grant on the school side. You had no findings on a compliance level, but you did have one matter to discuss. The uniform guidance, which is the authoritative oversight of the federal money, came out with some new standards for procurement, and they didn't have an official... some new standards for procurement, and they didn't have an official sign policy in place. They do now, so this comment has been corrected and addressed, but it did affect you in 2019. Moving on to the financial side of things, fund balance, it's what you care about the most, right? You have a couple of different components of fund balance, the one you care about the most being your unassigned, that's what you have available to use at your discretion. What's important to note between 2018, 2019, is your total fund balance increased by just under 1.7 million. Now, this is just the city's general fund, this doesn't include the school, which we'll talk about that in a minute. You also have a category called assigned, so this money, this is money in your fund balance that's been carved off for something. That something is what we call encumbrances, and some various projects, mostly capital projects, that take more than one year to complete, so that fund balance is protected here to be used in the future. Encumbrances, for those that don't know, is an accounting term, those are your, you budgeted for something in 2019, had a purchase order for it, but didn't receive the product or the service, so you're protecting that, that's going to be used, it's something you definitely needed, but for timing reasons, it didn't happen in the current year, so it's protected and going to be used in next year without affecting next year's budget. So again, the takeaway here is total fund balance went up 1.6, and unassigned is at a healthy, just over, just under 9.2 million. And here, you have a five-year trend, where you can see the activity and how it's moved over the last few years, 2019 being your best year. So the next couple graphs, we'll see how that fund balance came about. So in total, your budget is 56.6 million, and in total, you collected 57.5. So you've exceeded your budget by 900,000 on the revenue side. Some of the larger budget to actual variances, taxes, now that's property taxes, excise taxes, so that exceeded the budget due to higher-than-expected auto excise, which is driven by the strong economy. And on the auto excise tax, I'm told you used a five-year average from 2015 to 2018, and again, you still exceeded the budget. Licenses and permits also had a five-year average budget, again, driven by a stronger economy, with building permits exceeding budget. And then intergovernmental revenue, this is your, there's several different things in there, state revenue sharing, but the biggest reason why you exceeded budget here is you had an unbudgeted grant for FEMA assistance of about 575,000. But don't get excited, that's also offset by an unbudgeted expenditure that we'll talk about in a minute. Interest earnings exceeded budget, this is budgeted conservatively, not knowing how the market's going to be, but you had better rates of returns on investments, but also a higher cash position for most of the year. So the benefit of having a nice fund balance is you usually have a high cash and investment balance to offset it. So again, the takeaway here is you collected about 900,000 more than budget on the revenue side. So we still have to get to that million six, and how we do it here is expenditures coming in under budget by about seven, almost 800,000. Again, 56.6 million dollar budget, because your budget's balanced, you spent 55.9. General government came in under budget, mostly due to savings throughout all cost centers, but some of which was driven by open purchase orders that will carry into 2020. So that's, that's those open POs, the encumbrances that I talked about a minute ago. So you didn't spend the money, you still need the product or the service, so you're protecting it, and it's going to be spent in 2020. Public safety came in under budget due to vacancies in the police department that remained unfilled. And then public works came in under budget, in area you budgeted for an extra mechanic position that didn't need to be filled, and they also had about 277,000 of open purchase orders that didn't get used in 19, but will be in 20, so that's also an encumbrance. Unclassified is made up of several things, but mostly this savings is in the fringe benefit section due to vacancies, position vacancies throughout most departments. Capital projects, you know, was over budget, but that's one of those where, you know, you had assigned fund balance, so projects carry over from year to year. So here was a year where you spent more than budgeted, but these projects take, you know, several years to complete. But also in this, the biggie is the FEMA assistance that you received, the expenditures that, you know, the extra revenue you received, the expenditures are in this category, and that was not budgeted. So the takeaway here is you came in under budget on the expenditure side by about 800,000. So the 800,000 here, with the 900 on the revenues, hence your fund balance increase of 1.6 million. So the school activity is a special revenue fund for the city, it's not part of your general fund, it's its own fund. And their unassigned fund balance, last year, they had a deficit of just about a half a million dollars, they ended the year with just under 1.2 million positive. So their fund balance actually increased also by just under 1.7 million from just 18 to 19. Again, attributable to favorable revenue and expenditure variances that we'll discuss in a minute, but the takeaway here is they no longer have a deficit fund balance, and they're in the black by about a million two. So their budget is 39 million, and they collected 39.6, or 39.3 is their budget, and they collected 39.6. So they collected just under 300,000, so this is a favorable variance. State subsidy, their biggest revenue source, they received some additional subsidy after their budget had been prepared, and that was about 243,000. State agencies' clients came in under budget, they changed their contracted services that charged less, so they had less revenue coming in, because there's less they could bill, but in a minute, we'll see that they also had less costs, so the less revenue isn't harmful, because the costs weren't there either. Tuition exceeded budget, because there were more Dayton students enrolled than anticipated, and transportation revenue exceeded budget, because they billed for three school bus drivers instead of two for transporting Arundel students, which is based on enrollment. So they collected just under 300,000 over their budgeted 3.3 million. Their biggest savings is on the expenditure side, so again, a 3.3 million dollar budget, they spent just, I'm sorry, 39.3 million dollar budget, they spent just under 38. So they came in under budget on the expenditure side by just under 1.4 million. These are their cost centers, which the state requires these cost centers, so regular instruction, the biggest savings, mostly due to TA enrollment being less than expected, as well as various salary savings, and they have a budgeted contingency of 150,000 dollars that remained unused. So all those factors is where you got your million one. Special education came in under budget by 370,000. They moved around some positions, relocated some positions where needed, along with the savings I just spoke of a minute ago, which created less revenue, but here's where the expenditures were less. But some of these savings were offset with additional professional services, which were needed, which were necessary services to meet student demands, and all along with some legal costs. So they had some savings, but some expenditures took away some of those savings. So the school department really fluctuated, you know, in just one year, and again, they are now in a, in a positive fund balance situation. So now, a couple of, a couple of slides here, we can discuss, like, most, most counselors want to know what, you know, a proper unassigned fund balance is, for like the City of Saco. If you take just the city's general fund, so one, one indicator is, you know, bonding agents, you know, typically like to see, you know, a month and a half to two months expenditures on hand. So what that is, is twelve and a half to sixteen and a third percent of your budget, which includes the school, so in your case, the school's a separate fund. If you look at just the city's unassigned fund balance compared to their budget, you're at 16.22 percent, so you're right smack where you need to be, according to what, you know, is good guidance. The all funds, that includes some of your special revenue funds, I think a counselor over the last few years, or maybe even management, wanted to see this graph, so if you have some funds with some deficits, that's unassigned as well, so the reason why that's lower is because you had some negative fund balances, this would be like in your special revenues or your capital projects. But the most important of the three here is the next one, which is the city and school, at 18.14 percent, and again, because bonding agents will consider your school's fund balance, even though it's a separate fund, not your general fund, they look at it as, that's just the way you treat, you report it, it's still part of your municipality, and their fund balance counts. So when you take the city's fund balance and the schools, you're at 18 percent, slightly over, you know, the 16.65, 6.7, so you're, you're in a good spot on your unassigned as you have it here. And you can see the last five years where, you know, you were, five years ago, you were just half of what was recommended, so you've really come a long ways on your unassigned fund balance. A lot of the benefits I mentioned earlier was higher fund balance, usually have higher cash and investments, which generates higher rates of returns, so there's a lot of the benefits. Assigned and unassigned, the next graph just shows the trend, you know, for the last ten years, you're currently at your highest fund balance of 11.4, just between those two categories. You know, just 10 years ago, you were at 4.2, so that's increased 7.2 million dollars in just 10 years. It's always nice to compare yourself to some of the other larger municipalities, so this, this next graph is unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget compared to, you know, Augusta Bangor, Bedford Gorham. This is city and school, so regardless of whether they, they report their schools in the fund, in the general fund or not, it's factored in here, so you can see here, Saco's on the higher side. Now, I know your city ordinance has a different, slightly different calculation, where I think you take the current year unassigned, and you compare it to the next year's fund balance, so you're, I mean, the next year's budget, so your ordinance has, has a calculation that you choose to be comfortable with, and you're just using the next year's budget, but the same unassigned fund balance. So again, if you used your ordinance, you'd, you'd come up with a slightly different calculation, but it shouldn't vary by much. Property tax collection rates, and a nice graph for the last 10 years, you can see here where your collection rate has remained relatively stable. In the last, you know, 2018 to 2019, you're at just under 98 percent of your current year taxes collected, you know, by June 30, 2019. The collected in subsequent years is a different calculation, but that includes collections on all outstanding years, so even the, you know, the last four or five years where you have unpaid balances, you're still making collections on those. So a 97, 98 percent collection rate in this, you know, given, given the strong economy is excellent. Property tax rates for the last 10 years, 10 years ago, you were at 13.6, but that was, you know, pre having the, the school, they were in RSU at that point, you could see the large spike from 2012 to 2013, that's when you got your school back. But in the last 10 years, well, since, since the school being added, your, your property tax rates have only increased 5.9 percent, and in fact, between 18 and 19, it stayed exactly the same, and obviously, these rates are per thousand. This next chart, the general fund expenditure distribution, 2019, what's nice here is, this is your, your major, your major departments as a percentage of the total, so the transfer out to the school, that is the property tax going to the school, so it's a transfer out because it's not in your general fund, as I mentioned earlier, it's in a separate fund, so here's where the, the school's portion of the tax money is going over to them. They're making up about 51.55, 56 percent of your total expenditures, and as you would expect, public works and public safety being your two largest departments. But what's nice here is you can compare it against 2018 on the next slide, and you can see how consistent things stay here. Another important thing to note, debt service being quite low, at only, you know, three and a half percent of your total budget. But this is actual expenditures. Speaking of debt service, the next graph is the, the long-term debt and capital leases of the city. What's important to see here is bonded, bonds payable in the governmental funds, this is the non-wastewater debt, basically everything that the municipality is responsible for out of tax money, and you're at 20, 20 million, 225 outstanding in bonds, the wastewater has no outstanding bonds. And then the notes payable is just the bridge loan that you have with Maine DOT, and that's at 351,000. As you know, you have, you know, your financing source is more along the lines of capital leases, very similar to debt, it is debt, it's just that instead of financing through, you know, a bond or a note, you're getting a capital lease. The city and school had no new bonds in 2019, but you just, you did have about 2 million dollars of new capital leases. Various things, equipment for public works, and, you know, vehicles, buses, or different equipment, copiers, that's all in there at, at 2 million dollars of new capital leases. The wastewater has no outstanding bonds, but they entered in about 300,000 of new capital leases. So those have different financing terms, anywhere's from, you know, five to 10 years of payment terms. The net pension liability, if you recall, a few years ago, there was a New Gatsby that came out that said that you're responsible, actuaries have to calculate these next two, so luckily, I don't have to, I just have to take their numbers. But net pension liability is the city and school's unfunded portion of Maine PERS, so the, the state's plan is very well-funded, but it's not completely funded, so if it ended and crashed today, Saco would be on the hook for 3.6 million. Now, is that going to happen? Probably not. Are you ever going to have to scratch a check for 3.6 million? Probably not. But Gatsby seems to think that that's important, to have that liability disclosed, as is the other post-employment benefits, which is basically the same idea, except it's the value, it's the benefit and the liability of your retirees being able to stay on your, your health insurance plan. So that was also a Gatsby that came out a couple of years ago, and that's what that next one is. Debt per capita, this is, you know, your, your outstanding bonds, obviously divided by your population, bonding agencies like to see this stay below 2,000, you're at 1.1 million, I mean, 1.1,000, so quite low. But also, keep in mind that you do have three and a half million dollars of capital leases that, you know, some municipalities might bond that, you know, you have it in a capital lease, so the debt's a different source, but it's not bonded. So again, you're quite low, no matter how you look at it, even with the capital leases of the three and a half million. And then I think last year, a counselor wanted to see debt per capita for the same municipality, so I added that chart this year. You can see Saco being on the low side compared to some of these other communities that we discussed earlier. I'm going to go over the, I plan to go over some of the management letter comments, unless there's some financial-related questions you want to go over right now. Counselors, are there any questions at this moment? Seeing none, please continue. That means the graphs helped. So in addition to auditing the financial information, I mentioned auditing internal controls, this is where we test, at least every three years, we have to test your major controls, this being the receeding functions, the disbursement functions, payroll functions for the, for the city and school, and, you know, we, we, we do internal control testing, and we come up with, you know, potential areas for improvement. I mentioned briefly what a material weakness was, that's, you know, the, the systems in place are so weak that they wouldn't prevent errors, or detect errors, or prevent them from happening, a significant deficiency, less severe, and a material weakness. A significant deficiency less severe and a material weakness less than that. You had no material weaknesses, but you did have a couple of significant deficiencies this year. And you can see in detail on page ten of the report called Reports Required by Government Auditing Standards and Uniform Guidance. One dealt with, you know, your tax commitment, and I think, it shouldn't be a surprise to you all, 'cause I think you've been told about this, but it, you know, your certificate of assessment had some errors on it. Double counted some revenues, the Betty and the Homestead. So the way it works, obviously, you know, you need, you know, you have a set amount of money that it costs to run the city. You, you carve off what you think you're gonna collect from different revenue sources, and then the plug figure in the end is your tax that you need to raise to balance your budget. And in this particular year, you double counted some revenues in error to the tune of just point, one point one million. Luckily, there were, there were things in place that prevented an unfavorable variance to your fund balance, that being overlay and a lot of your revenue sources coming in higher than budget. But the fact of the matter is, internal controls are policies and procedures in place that should help detect errors before they happen. So obviously, that didn't happen. You can see management's response to it, and again, I know you've all heard about it, so you don't need to have me rehash it. The certificate of assessment is the document that we just discussed that comes up with that calculation. And, you know, it had errors on it. It had different value, incorrect valuations, formula errors. I mean, it, 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 it had, it had some issues this year. And again, policies and procedures, even though these things happen, if the correct policies and procedures are in place, flags go up and these things get detected before they get finalized. So that's why it's a significant deficiency. Then you had, again, you can see management's response to that matter on page eleven. And then just other comments. Activity funds on the school side. Every year, we test the different schools. These are the, these are the different checking accounts that, that are held at the schools, usually by the principal or the, or the secretaries, for the different programs at the schools the, the students raise and spend money on. But again, what's important here is this is what we call decentralized cash. It's not under the control of your policies and procedures. It's, it's out there. Somebody has a checkbook in a drawer, collects a lot of cash. And if you see the activity, it's in detail on the school's financial statements, but you could see some of the revenue that goes in and out of these accounts in a year is substantial. So you can see the two issues here. I think there were some deposit slips that they, they couldn't locate to substantiate deposits, and some invoices that they couldn't substantiate as well. In some cases, they paid some sales tax, and you're exempt, so you shouldn't even be paying sales tax. But you could see management's response to that matter. Another pros, prob, problem over there, we tested payroll at the school, and one of the things we do is make sure that, you know, the elections you choose on your health insurance is, is properly implemented, implemented in the system. So there were some errors on that. Again, a lot of these things would be, would be avoided with a second pair of eyes reviewing things, but management's response has been there as well. The next comment is not really a comment as much as it is just keeping you aware. This particular year coming up, there's a couple of new GAsbys that are coming out. One being the activity funds. Right now is an activity fund, which is separate and, and off your financial statements. Gatsby eighty-four is rolling that into your financial statements. It's gonna cause all kinds of problems, trust me on that, just because of the centralized nature of these things, and it's gonna send people like Glenis right over the edge when, you know, somebody collects cash and just dumps a pile of cash on your desk and says, "Here, that's for yearbooks." So Gatsby eighty-four is just looking at your activity funds and other fiduciary funds and making them special revenue funds, sorta like all your other funds. Gatsby eighty-seven will be a big one for you. There's not gonna be any longer, any operating lease versus capital lease. They're all gonna be capital in nature, depending on, you know, the, the nature of the asset that's being held. That's gonna be a real big Gatsby. Luckily, that one's not for this year, it's the year after. So one's for this year, one's for the year after. But the Gatsby is never bored. So that's really not a comment, that's a criticism of your controls, it's just basically making you aware of, of it. And then the last one deals with the school's compliance, which I spoke at the beginning of the meeting. The uniform guidance came out with a procurement policy. You had a procurement policy, as did the school, but the uniform guidance had to go and add all kinds of extras to it and say, you know, there's needs to be things like contracting small business, minority businesses, women business enterprises, bonding requirements, contractors, things with, things that are required if you have what they call a small purchase, you know, when to go out to bid. So they didn't have an approved policy at the time of the, for two thousand nineteen, but they do now. So this comment, in theory, has been corrected and will be fine for this coming year. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions? Counselor Johnston.
In the transmittal letter, under assessed valuation and fiscal standings, there's, it states that seventy-three percent of assessed value is residential and twenty-seven percent is not-
Sorry, seventy-three percent was what?
Residential.
Okay.
Assessed value. And twenty-seven percent is commercial. Can you tell me if the commercial is including multifamily housing?
Not off the top of my head, I can't. Glenis, that was your document, do you know?
I don't know. I'm residential, but that's-
Counselor Copeland, you had a question?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. You talked about vacancies in many departments. So the only vacancies that I've been aware of are, like, there's one or something in DPW, there's in parks, and the police department. Are there others?
No, but the police department, I think, had the most vacancies, and that was the reason why they came in on the budget the most.
That's good.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your presentation. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Chapter Fifteen, Funds Update. Glenis, will you be giving us a, a presentation on this, or?
I can do a follow-up. I have to go to my office in December. Will the council like a refresher?
Perhaps for the council and also for the folks in attendance, maybe a slight refresher.
So back in December, I did a quick presentation, actually, it might have been November, I apologize. So it would've been prior to the, to the changeover in counselors. But there had been a request from a couple of counselors, as well as the prior city administrator, to review our fund balance. So in the fund balance, which is our Chapter Fifteen, there's a couple of pieces of information. That particular chapter talks about a certain number of funds that sit on the city's books. And there's more information about the financial standing of those in the full city audited financial statements. But inside of Chapter Fifteen, there's some more description, specifically the city trust account, which is a organization set up to track and maintain monies that were left to the city over the last couple of hundred years at this point by various wealthy benefactors who wanted their wealth to be used for the good of the community. So it sets up a board and some other things. The Lucy Kimball Health Trust is also part of Chapter Fifteen. And then in Chapter Fifteen, there's language around asset forfeiture. The city put together ordinance language governing asset forfeiture. Those are funds received from either the state or the federal government, and also tracked in our financials related to the forfeiture of assets and a certain amount of, certain portion of those funds are returned to the police department for capital investment or various equipment. Finally, Chapter Fifteen talks about the unassigned fund balance. So we just had a great presentation from Roger talking about the status of our unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is basically the surplus left on our fund balance after you remove funds that have been assigned to the capital projects, as well as encumbrances for the following year. Per the Chapter Fifteen language, up until now, there's been a minimum and a maximum for the unassigned fund balance. The minimum has been eight point three-three percent of the following year's council-approved general fund budget, and the maximum has been ten percent of the following year's council-approved general fund budget. Based on recommendations from our bond agency, as well the recommendations of our auditors and the recommendations of GFOA, I came to council and recommended that we increase the maximum to sixteen point six-seven percent. And the reason we wanna increase the maximum is, in the last couple of years, the city has been able to increase its unassigned fund balance without having to raise tax revenues because we have a strong economy. And that's evidenced by strong excise revenues coming in, all of the building activities going on in the city, et cetera. So why not take advantage of the strong economy to retain more of that surplus in our unassigned fund balance, so that should there be an emergency, some kind of climate emergency where we need to be able to move funds around quickly, or perhaps in slower economic times, we can offset tax increases by having a stronger unassigned fund balance at this point in time. So I presented this information to the council. The council seemed interested in increasing the maximum to sixteen point six-seven percent, and that is the most significant change in the language that you had before you. The other change that I made is that I added a list of all other funds prescribed or implied by city ordinance. So something that can be a little bit confusing for a new city administrator or finance director coming into the city is, why do we have all of these special revenue funds on our books, and which ones are governed simply by past practice versus city ordinance? So there's some peculiarities in the organization of our city ordinance. For example, the Economic Development Fund actually sits inside of the chapter describing the finance department. The Camp Ellis Fund is prescribed by ordinance in the beachfront, beachfront ordinance. So it was a little bit tricky to know, where are all these funds and what should we be tracking? So I've also included a list of all of the funds prescribed or implied by city ordinance. Now, if you compare that list to the city financials or to the budget document, you may find there are more special revenue funds than what I've listed in this. But I limited the list of funds simply to those prescribed or implied by city ordinance so that you can differentiate between what's sitting on the city books because of past practice, because of special requirements related to a particular piece of revenue, versus what is prescribed or implied by city ordinance. And then, of course, there are links to the related ordinances. So that's basically a summary of what's in this particular motion. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? No questions. Counselor Archer, you're, you're assigned to this. Are you okay with making this motion?
Yes, Mayor. On November tw, on November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, the finance director presented a recommendation to city council to increase the maximum unassigned fund balance per city charter to sixteen point six-seven percent of the following year's budget or two-month expenditures. This higher unassigned fund balance will enhance the city's ability to make appropriations in times of emergency and to offset tax increases during economic slowdowns. Other minor corrections have been also made to Chapter Fifteen. This chapter now also contains a comprehensive list of all funds prescribed or implied by city ordinance. I move to add amendments to Chapter Fifteen, Funds, to the January twenty-first council meeting agenda.
It's been a motion by Counsel Archer to move this to the twenty-first agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston.
So one of my council goals was going to have to do with this particular ordinance, but I'm gonna offer it up now since we're dealing with it. So at the next reading, I will likely be making these amendments. Under the surplus section, so fifteen dash twenty-eight, we presently have only three uses for these funds allowed, or at least take precedence over other uses from council. I've felt for years kind of pigeonholed by those uses, and I would like to add a special revenue account that would be used for, we would assign funds to this account to be used in future budget cycles for property tax rate stabilization, and a tax, or potential for a tax rebate fund. So in years that we grow this fund above the sixteen point six-six percent, we would be able to potentially give a rebate back to taxpayers. And the last one would be a retirement of debt. Presently, those aren't in the ordinance, and I think they should be.
We will add those for potential amendments for the January twenty-first meeting if, if there's no objection.
Could we add that in writing so we can-
Absolutely. Yes. Any further discussion? Counselor Archer? Roll call to move this to the twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
See it on the twenty-first agenda. Next up, we have the creation of a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Counselor Copeland, do we have a motion?
We sure do. The background is that a group of Saco residents has requested the council's consideration of the formation of a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, not unlike the existing Parks and Recreation Advisory Board or Age-Friendly Saco. In general, the group's goal is for Saco to become a bicycle and walking-friendly community, which provides for safe, convenient, and enjoyable active transportation for all ages and abilities. The group intends to involve all potential interest groups, including the Saco School Department, Age-Friendly Saco, Bedford Saco, Old Orchard Beach Transit, the Maine DOT, the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, city staff, and others. The recommendation is, the bicycle and pedestrian policy is a universal issue affecting all ages and citizens and visitors alike, as recognized by the two thousand eighteen Comprehensive Plan update. We support the establishment of a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. I move to add the creation of a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee to the January twenty-first council meeting agenda.
Been a motion made by Counselor Copeland. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland.
I have a, a couple of edits to it. I have, run them by Bob Hamlin, who is on the board of this proposed committee, and I'd like to get them in the records, that they appear on the January twenty-first. I have submitted them to the mayor and to the city administrator, but, so that everybody knows, I'm reading from the Saco Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee mission statement. So the second sentence, it says, "The committee will work in concert with the City of Saco, Department of Public Works, the Saco School Department, and the Department of Parks and Recreation." I would like to add at that point, the Saco Conservation Commission, advocating for safe places to bike and walk in our city. And as an advisory committee, there were some changes to language that reinforces that it is an advisory committee. So the first bulleted item under the goals of the Saco Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee are to, and it says, "Plan for and initiate implementation of," but I suggest that as an advisory committee, it would be "plan for and recommend implemation, implementation of a seamless networks of sidewalks, bike paths, bike lanes, and so forth." And the same thing for the third bullet point down. I would just add, in front of that bullet point, "Make recommendations to assist in providing a safe and convenient community." And then two bullet points down after that, it says, "Strive to create a cost-effective." I would edit that to read, "Strive to make recommendations for a cost-effective, equitable, and fully accessible transportation network." That's- That's the end of my changes.
Any other discussion?
Well, if I may just say that-
Counselor Copeland.
I am really thrilled that one of our community members had the initiative to get excited about it, talk to the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, and get this put forward. This is long overdue, and I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. Any further? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, and have a motion and a second on the table to move this to the January 21 council meeting agenda. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Seven oh, motion passes to move it to the January 1 agenda. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, we have an administrative update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our RFP for Economic Development, Market Analysis, and Action Plan Matrix is now available. This will help guide the state of Saco's economic development policies and strategies in the future. Just some brief background, the Action Plan Matrix will identify priorities and catalyze strategies to help leverage targeted growth and maximize economic return, including public and private investments. The matrix will also provide tangible recommendations to help guide Saco's future. Those responses will be back, due back on February 5, 2020. An update on our strategic planning sessions, that is now slated for the January 27 council meeting. We have decided to handle the process now in-house with city staff, foregoing a consultant. City staff will be meeting earlier than the 27th to conduct a similar exercise to develop their strategies and goals, and will have our session back here on the 27th. So, as already requested by Mayor Doyle, please submit your responses into myself and Tori Gorman, now by January 21 at 12 noon, if possible. And just a last update on our general assistance position in the clerk's office. City Clerk Michelle Hughes is currently researching other possibilities for sharing the position with a neighboring community. As you know, we did approach Bedford, but due to some, several logistical issues, it doesn't look like that will be a possibility. So barring any progress with possibly sharing a position with another community, we will advertise it here and fill it ourselves, but it may be rather challenging with it being just a two-day-a-week position, but of course, we are taking this very seriously, as pointed out by, I think, Counselor Copeland at the last meeting, that this is a very important position to many of our residents, and we certainly are going to make sure that city services are preserved and are what our citizens deserve. So we'll have more on that in the future, but we're currently still researching that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city administrator? Counselor Copeland.
Thank you for that sensitivity about caring about our citizenry. We certainly do. I'm just, I don't know what the roles that Mr. Rankin is taking on, and whoever gets him is lucky, he's fabulous, but he was really good at that. I don't know if there's any room in his schedule, or any desire on his part to maintain that general assistance role, but I just thought I'd put that out there.
Any other questions for the city administrator? Seeing none, moving on to Agenda Item 8, council discussion and comment. Counselors, any, Counselor Archer?
Yes, just for a comment into the public. First of all, I want to thank school board member Johnson for sharing her opinion on the matter of Board One not having a school board member. I was also thinking of this as well. So when I started doing a little bit of research, Board One will officially have no representation until the elections. However, what I did look at is the capacity that I can hold. While I do respect the autonomy of the school board, I can still be a voice to the board member as a concerned counselor. So if all citizens of Board One and citizens of the Saco School Board issues want to come and address it to me through email, phone calls, or all that, my contact information is on the website, I will gladly hear. You might see me hear more and more of the school board meetings, because I do believe Board One still needs representation, and while we will not have official representation, I will serve as a, what's that word? I was going to say like, I'm sorry. Well, not ad hoc, because it's not official. I want it to be known that I'm just going to be there as a concerned counselor. I was thinking more of like a surrogate, would be a better word to say. So, again, if you have any concerns related to the school, I can definitely have some good relationships with the school board members, the mayor himself, who also serves, so I can also address. Again, it will be, though, as a surrogate, and not in an official capacity, so. But I definitely wanted, I'm glad to hear that there's other school board members that are aware of the, that Board One will not have representation for votes.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Any other council discussion? Seeing no, moving on to Item Number 9, adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minton, is there a second? Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hand vote, all in favor? In unanimous, seven zero, we are adjourned at 7:42.